Thank you and welcome once again, May 9th, Radnor Board of Commissioners meeting. First, to give you notice of executive session that was held today, all commissioners to discuss matters of litigation, and all commissioners were present except for Commissioner Schaefer. And now we want to move to our consent agenda, and this is a body of motions that we want to group together for expediency's sake, and so we can pass as one motion. If any commissioner would like to pull out any one individual item, they are entitled to do so, and if any resident or participant, citizen in the audience would like to pull one of the items out, they're allowed to do so as well. So first I'll ask you, any commissioners want to pull any items from the consent agenda?
I have a question about D, and I'd like to pull E out of the consent agenda.
D and E?
Yes.
D and E, alright, we'll pull out D.
Alright, and there's a lot to be discussed on the first one under D, which is 406 North Wayne Avenue, so I'd like to have that pulled out.
Okay, well I think by D we got all four pulled out, is that correct, Don? Is that what you intended? Okay, very good.
Oh, was he taking all?
Yes. Anyone else from the commissioners? Alright, they'll ask if anyone in the audience would like to pull one of the items. Alright, seeing none, then the first thing is we'd like to entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda, A, B, C, F, and G.
So moved.
Second?
Second, alright. All those in favor, or it's any discussion from the board, let's do that. No? Any discussion from the public? Thank you, alright, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? None, so passes six to zero. Thank you, with Commissioner Schaefer absent. So let's go to item D, consideration of a motion to approve the certificate of appropriateness for four items on the HARB list. And, Don, you wanted to pull them, so you want to take a lead on this?
Yeah, I didn't, I wasn't sure which ones, if there was a memo there from you, Bob, about denying, and so what is it denying the application for 1604? So I wasn't, it wasn't clear to me what we were being asked to do. I don't know if that was Jim's concern also.
HARB had recommend, on the others, the HARB had recommended approval, on 1604 they recommended denying that one. So if you wanted to, you could do a motion to recommend six, seven, and eight. HARB had recommended denial on 1604. What I know from myself would recommend the board would overrule the HARB on that one because that property has been a problem. I know we had one of the neighbors speak at the last meeting that that property has been challenged. I know that the owner there wants to make some improvements to that property, and I fully agree and support that, and the neighbors there too, that want to see that changed, so.
That was the, that Mrs. Flanagan spoke to us about at the last meeting, is that correct, Jim? That's the property?
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'll listen to all your opinions on it, but at this point, I have the same opinion that I had at the last meeting. Also, I can't, I don't want to vote to deny somebody's property right based upon what in our packet, all it said is, "The HARB would like it rehabilitated." So if someone wants action other than, to me, the property owner has rights, and if you're gonna ask us to minimize or take away those rights, I need a lot more than we want to see it rehabilitated. So I'm where I was at the end of last meeting, that the property owner has the right to change the building, and, you know, I see myself supporting the certificate of appropriateness. I'll listen to other opinions, and if something changes my mind, I'll proceed accordingly, but in my opinion, we should issue the certificate.
Alright, there are at least three residents of the neighborhood here to speak on the subject, or at least to observe. This is a very difficult case. It's difficult because, first of all, let me give you the background, the property at 406 North Wayne Avenue is landlord-owned, and has been rented out for many, many years to, in some cases, students, not entirely in compliance with our student rental ordinance. Currently, it's not rented to students, but it is rented out. The property owner has, according to people I've spoken to, not done a fully compliant job, or not done a good job of keeping the property maintained in accordance with aesthetic considerations and our building codes. It's been generally allowed to deteriorate. So the owner of this, Mr. Sparrango, has come now to the HARB, he's been before them twice, and this most recent trip has resulted in the HARB, which is Historic Architectural and Review Board, denying his right to get a certificate of appropriateness, which is synonymous with saying, "We don't agree with your plan to demolish the building and to construct a new single-family home there." And the reason the HARB is opposed to granting the certificate of appropriateness is that the HARB feels that the property has value from a historic standpoint. Our resident historian, Greg Pritchard, is not in the audience tonight, but I do believe he made a statement at one of our earlier meetings on this subject, that this is one of the original cottages in North Wayne. Okay, so the HARB felt that this property should have a chance to be rehabilitated, and they want the developer to go back to his drafting board and come up with a plan to salvage the property. Now, in the audience tonight is next-door neighbor Kathryn Flanagan, who is tired of living next to, and I'll let her speak for herself, but she's tired of living next to what she considers an unchemmed property, and she has looked at the plans that Mr. Sparrango has presented to HARB and to others, and has found those plans attractive, and that if they were to be realized with a new structure, a new home, it would be an asset to the community. There are others in the audience that feel that the property is of value, it can be rehabilitated, and that the owner should not be allowed to neglect a property and then hide behind or stand behind the condition of neglect after many, many years as justification for being allowed to tear it down. I should mention lastly, before I suggest if they, people want to come up and talk, is that 406 North Wayne Avenue is in the North Wayne Historic District, which was approved by the Board of Comis, well, was approved by the Pennsylvania Historic and Museum Commission in 19AD5, and then approved by the Department of Interior, and so the district is on the national, is listed on the National Register of Historic Places. So that's what I have to say on this subject, and, Mr. President, it's up to you to, I suppose, let people contribute or let other commissioners talk.
Alright, is there any other commissioner comment? Thank you, Jim.
Yeah, from what I understand, when they went before HARB, at first, the plans that they had to reconstruct this property, I believe, were found to be within the constraints or the requirements of the HARB ordinance. So I guess my question is, if that's going to be the case, if it's gonna meet the historical requirements, and the property owner's willing to invest the money to do this, what's the problem?
Alright, any other comment for the commissioners? John?
I think what this really shows us is that our current ordinances regarding historic preservation are woefully inadequate. The information I was able to get, gather indicate to me that this individual currently does meet our requirements, and it's inappropriate to deny them this just based on some other actions. I mean, that would be like if someone got speeding tickets and you wanted to deny their rights, you know? So I intend to vote to overturn HARB.
Great, thank you very much. Do any members of the audience that would like to come up and make a comment?
Tom Lowey, 417 North Wayne Avenue. I live across the street and walk by the property every day. I bought an old house 20 years ago, and I've invested significant amounts of money in maintaining my old house. If I had spent the same amount of money on the house across the street, there would be no need to tear it down. Because you neglect the property and don't take care of it, should not give you the right to tear it down later, especially when it's in Historic District, and it's a historic house. It's one of the last 10 houses that are in the entire district that match this house. A house across the street, the same style, same builder, same design, same cottage, was rehabbed and just sold for $850,000. A house on the same side of the street, down the road, in the 300 block, was a law office and was rehabbed by the individual owner back to a single-family dwelling, still matching the criteria of being in the Historic District. House down from that just sold last year for $500,000. I don't think the house has lost that much value. If the money had been spent to maintain the house, it wouldn't be in such disrepair, and be in need of such expensive rehabilitation needs. Thank you.
Yeah, this is Nick Camelia representing Mr. Sparrango, who's present here. Mr. Sparrango, by the way, does live on Kennelworth Lane in Rounder Township, and he has purchased other homes in the North Wayne area, and has rehabbed them, and has sold them, but they were much different than this particular home, in that this home, this home is 1,900 square feet. And when he bought it, it was a duplex, it remains a duplex. We've shown you pictures last time of, basically, it was a brick home, it was totally brick. There was a comment made at the HARB, but it was only partially brick, which is not true. Totally brick, it was stuccoed over, and in addition, was built on the back of the house before Mr. Sparrango, that's not part of the original addition, that we'll show you pictures of, that is certainly not consistent with anything in the HARB. But Ben would also like to make some comments, and I can put some photographs up as well. And just quickly, here we go. This is on the very edge of the HARB. Every case in the HARB should be unique. You know, I understand we have a HARB, I understand we have Historic Districts. This is the building right next to the current building. So as I mentioned, this is on the very edge of the HARB, right next to this building is a very large apartment building that you see here. We also have photographs of the addition, and this is the addition you'll see on the back, that was prior to Mr. Sparrango purchasing it. And I, you can tell from those additions that certainly there's no historical value on that. Obviously, that was before the HARB. Mr. Sparrango purchased this before the HARB ordinance came into effect. He perched it, purchased it as an investment. I'm sure today, if this home was for sale in the HARB, he would not have purchased it because it cannot be made into a single-family dwelling feasibly, particularly since it's 1,900 square feet. And the way it's laid out are the bedrooms, you go from one bedroom into another bedroom. There's no hallways. Basically, it's just straight back, you know, as you can see, it's very narrow, it's basically one room wide. Go ahead, Ben.
If I may, for the record, I will build whatever HARB recommends. I want to go to HARB and build what HARB wants. So just for the record, I would love to take the plan that we did design, and any recommendations to that plan, I will do, as long as it's cohesive to the neighborhood. I have no problem with that. But it's tough to take a 1,900-square-foot house that was stuccoed. This house has no character to it. This house was stuccoed many, many years ago, and just for the record, this house is 120 years old. I bought this house 25 years ago, so are you telling me this house didn't fall apart in the 90 years that someone else owned it, and then when I owned it, it started to fall apart? This house is 1,900 square feet. I don't think there's a market, and there's a very low market for a 1,900-square-foot in Wayne today.
This is just the design that he has. You'll see, it's very consistent with the North Wayne area and the North Wayne style, and I believe the roofs are cedar-shaped?
All cedar-shaped.
All cedar-shaped roofs. It's very attractive, you know, type of home. As I said, I think it's important to use some common sense here. Yes, it's in the HARB, does that mean every single home in the HARB has to be restored? I think you have to look at everything individually. You're not establishing any precedent by saying that you can tear down this house. There's no precedent that you're establishing for other people to come in who want to tear down homes that do have, you know, a great deal of historic significance. You know, I think you can see here that Ben's intending to do a really nice job here. I know the Flanagins would like a new home next to them in this style, actually. I know that Kathy, I've spoken to Kathy, and known her for a long time, and she does have some complaints about the current existing home and how it's handled. But all in all, I think this is a good development, it's good for the community, and it's good for North Wayne.
And Nick, the plan is to sell this, not to rent it? Is that the plan?
It will be a sale, it'll be a single-family dwelling. He has talked about moving into it, but we can't make that, you know, we can't make that a vermin to the board here, that, you know, he's definitely gonna move into it. He's talking about downsizing it.
So these issues with the renters are gonna go away, as part of this, is what I'm given to believe?
Alright, thank you very much. You have someone else coming up? Welcome.
How you doing? Steve Elliott, West Avenue. I am in favor of the plan to knock down the house and rebuild it. Typically, I'm very against development going on in the township, and I appreciate Mr. Curley's comments about the homeowner's right to develop. I've lost a couple fights based on that very logic, where we fought tooth and nail or spoke up against development projects near our house, and ultimately, they were approved because the owner had a right to develop. So that's one reason I'm here, is because it would be very irritating as a citizen to have my complaints, or to have development occur where I did not want it, for one reason, for the right to develop by the owner, and then to not have that right upheld just because it's in the HARB. That would be aggravating. I've been visiting the neighbor's house for 20 years. I remember in middle school, being in Wayne, and a college kid walking down the street saying, "Come on down the 406, you know, we're having a party down there." And that was probably 18 years ago, and the house looks exactly the same as it did then. It hasn't been updated, I think everything that everyone has said is completely accurate. And I think denying the plan to knock it down, you're essentially allowing, pardon me, but a slumlord to operate next door. The house is absolutely horrible. And the last point I wanted to make was that I agreed with Commissioner Nagel's comments about a more comprehensive plan for the township around historical buildings. And I don't always like to be part of the problem in terms of ranting and raving about the issues we have with the township, but I want to at least put on the table the idea that the township uses with the Shade Tree Commission, where if you're gonna be cutting down a certain amount of trees, in, as a developer, you can then make a donation to the Shade Tree Commission to help plant new trees across the township. If there is a split vote or there's indecision, I know the Historical Society absolutely needs resources and funding, and if you're going to approve the plan, maybe you could work out a deal with the builder for a donation to the Historical Society. I think another good idea, because it's mine, would be to ask Mr. Sparrango to make a publicly-available plaque either on the property or adjacent to the sidewalk, that at least gives recognition to the historical significance of that site. I think a donation to the Soci, to the Historical Society, or some sort of recognition of the significance of the property, actually does a lot better to preserving the history of that building than leaving the building as it does right now. If people knew that that's one of the 10 original cottages of the township, and we let that building stay in its current state, I would say that does, that's a slap in the face to a degree, or it doesn't really say a lot about our township, that we would let a historical building be treated that way. So I think memorializing it and allowing him to develop a new house is, I think, would be a great path forward.
Thank you for your comment. If there's anyone else that would like to make a comment, sure. Please come up, thank you.
My name is Pamela Jensen. I live at 407 North Wayne Avenue, which is directly across the street from the property at issue, and I've lived there for 30 years, more than 30 years, actually. I moved to this neighborhood, in part at least, because of its historic value and its historic character. I think it's important to recognize that our neighborhood is not a reproduction. It's the real deal, it's the real thing. We live in a neighborhood of well-maintained, well-constructed 19th-century homes, and I am very committed to keeping the character of that neighborhood and its original structures. It is certainly true that this property has been neglected for 30 years, and I have been very unhappy, living across the street from that, to view that every day. However, I think it would be extremely bad precedent to allow demolition by neglect under the Historic District's ordinance. I don't read the ordinance to permit that kind of activity, and I don't believe the Board of Commissioners should either. Mr. Clark, I would just make a comment about your earlier statement. This is not a reconstruction, this is a demolition and starting over. There is no evidence at all that this property is not salvageable. I believe the owner claimed that to begin with, but now he seems to be claiming that it's simply more economically viable and more valuable to destroy this house and start over. I don't think that is permitted under the Historic District's ordinance either, at least that doesn't make any sense under any Historic District's ordinance that has any teeth. The addition to the house that was added later is simply irrelevant, in my opinion. We're talking about the value of the historic, original structure to begin with, not anything that subsequent owners have added to the house. As Mr. Greg Pritchard explained to HARB, and perhaps to you previously, there is a very good example of a house that is almost identical to 406, which is just down the street, that had been reconstructed, rehabilitated, and sold for a fairly hefty sum. It is now a lovely-looking house, it was reconstructed, and the same thing can be done with 406. So I am asking the commissioners to please support the HARB decision. I think it was a fairly considered and very reasonable decision that protects the historic character and integrity of our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jensen. I see another person coming, welcome.
Good evening. Kathy Flanagan, I live at 406, directly across from, directly next door to the home that's being considered. I too am, you know, I love old things, that's why we bought where we are, but I don't see any, I mean, the fact that it's one of the 10 or 12 cottages, yes, that is historic, but there is nothing that is historic about this house as it stands in the neighborhood. And I don't want it to stand in the neighborhood that, because it's gonna fall down. We won't have to be back here, it's just gonna fall down. The problem is, is that once Mr. Sparrango was not permitted to rent to students anymore, he's had a difficult time renting it, I believe, because it has stood empty for a year, a year and a half, where sidewalks don't get shoveled, you know, things like, things to that nature. And I believe it'll be unrentable soon, because it, you know, I can just show you a few of the pictures, and I appreciate Ms. Jensen's and Mr. Lowey's point of view. However, Mr. Lowey lives four houses, three or four houses down, on lots twice as wide, and he'd have to come to his sidewalk to see this house. Ms. Jensen lives across the street and has a beautiful dogwood. I can show you what I see 30 feet from my back door and my bedroom. I don't know how to do these pictures here. Just put them down? Okay. This is the bedroom, this is a window on that addition that has no wood frame, it's got insulation, and there's like 18, there's like six different window styles plugged in here. This is the window upstairs, where the dogs put their heads out, the window. I mean, there's no screen or anything there. This is the side porch, where there hasn't been painted in at least 20 years, and it's down to the bare wood, which is most of the trim of the house. Oh, I'll just show this one. And this one is showing the PVC pipe that, I don't know what kind of pipe that is, Ben, but it's a pipe that's on the outside of the house that's kind of unsightly, that was just fixed maybe five, 10 years ago, something like that. So my concern is, is that if it is remained to stay as a duplex, it's just, it'll eventually fall down. And this is 30 feet, I mean, from me to Mr. Zinkowski, is, this is, come up my driveway every day, this is what I see out my bedroom window, this is what I see the first thing when I walk out the door. So, you know, we are, we are in favor of something better, making an opportunity, taking an opportunity to improving this property and seeing things move on. So that's where we stand on the issue. Thank you.
Kathy, you're at 404.
404. Yeah, it's 404.
You said 406.
Oh, sorry, no, I'm at 4, right next to 406. Thank you.
Anyone else care to comment on this issue? Is there any other commissioner comment?
My question is, what's the difference between, number one, it says approve or deny, so if you approve or deny the certificate appropriateness, and what's the difference between that and number three, reverse the recommendation of the HARB? Why do we have three alternatives here? I'm not, I'm not clear what my, our three, which Board of Commissioner alternatives are.
That's what's in the, in the ordinance, Rich. I think what you could do, I think reverse and, or deny the certificate, either one of those, you could have other reasons other than what the HARB's reasons were. You could approve it with some additional conditions that's based on the HARB ordinance, but I'm not sure why the code reads that way, but that's what's in the ordinance, those three options. So if you approve the certificate under number one, I think you're in effect reversing the HARB board. If you deny it, then you're consistent with the HARB.
Right. And if we reverse the recommendation of the HARB, that sounds to me to be the same as approve and won.
Yeah.
Or if there's a difference, I'm...
I don't, I don't think there's practically any difference between them. You can attach additional conditions under number two, if you have something in front of you you want to attach.
Alright, this is a very difficult question, as I mentioned in my spoke in the beginning. I'm going to vote to uphold the HARB denial of the certificate of appropriateness, and I do that knowing that I have a very good friend in the audience, Kathy Flanagan. I just don't see that this property should be allowed to slip out of our hands. It's in a Historic District, and it does have some drawbacks, some, some real problems, but I think with some creativity and a good architect, the property can be salvaged and restored to its once-great glory. So that will be my vote.
I'll make a motion that we approve the certificate of appropriateness for HARB, 2016-04.
Call the vote, all those in favor of, state your motion again.
To approve the certificate of appropriateness.
Approve the certificate overturning the HARB, please say aye.
No, no, hold on a second, we're not overturning HARB. HARB makes a recommendation, so there is no overturning, so my motion is to approve the certificate of appropriateness.
So the motion then would be to approve the certificate of appropriateness inconsistent with action taken by the HARB in connection with this?
No.
Reverse.
No, no. It's to approve, to approve the certi- It's to approve, to approve the certificate of appropriateness and not accept the recommendation. So there's no, there's no procedural irregularity. Nobody's decision is reversed. It's our decision. They make a recommendation to us. My opinion is that it is in every, you know, I heard all sides, and my opinion is that it's in the best interest of the municipality to approve the certificate.
That's, I don't have any objection, but again, we have three alternatives here, and I'm not sure that that is procedurally consistent with what our alternatives are, or are we allowed to just say whatever we want?
The board, the board can approve.
I think the reason, the reason you see three alternatives is simply the way the person that drafted these resolutions decided to word them. I don't think there's any legal significance under our ordinance to do it.
Well, I guess I, you know, that could be, but I'm just not sure. But here, Chapter 178-8 point G require us to either approve this certificate appropriateness, approve or deny. If we approve it, in this case, it is inconsistent with the action taken by the HARB. It's what it is.
It's inconsistent with the recommendation.
There's no question.
Inconsistent with the recommendation. The distinction I'm trying to make is that they don't have, the HARB does not have the authority to issue a certificate. That authority is solely the responsibility of this board. They make a recommendation. So in that regard, it's no different than the Planning Commission or any other advisory body that makes a recommendation to us.
I would say then, it seems to me that in this case, what we, what your motion should be is to reverse the recommendation of the HARB.
I believe that's the correct motion.
It's to reject it.
No, reverse it. Number three, reverse the recommendation of the HARB.
Number one is if the HARB approves it, we can approve it. If the HARB denies it, we can deny it. But in either case, one is to be consistent with the HARB.
Yes, correct.
Three, three is, three, I think, is what we want to do here. So.
No.
The certificate of appropriateness is the germane issue here, right? So are we granting that or are we denying it? That's the question. Don made, Commissioner Curley made a motion to grant the certificate of appropriateness, which only we can do. That's the motion. Let's vote on it.
Yeah, I have to say that's, and that's the procedure we followed for the six years that I've been on the board.
Again, I, the, the motion was made by, to deny the issuance of certificate appropriateness by the HARB, the correct action is to reverse that.
John Rice, is there any?
Which is what an approval will do.
Yeah, that's correct.
So whether, whether Don says it or not, that's what it'll.
That's what it'll be. It'll be number three. Okay, very good. The vote, all those in favor of approving it, say aye.
Aye.
All those in favor, against it?
Aye.
John, how did you vote?
I voted to approve it.
To approve it. So passes, passes 4 to 2. Correct. All right, very good. All right. Okay, thank you.
There's no procedural footfall.
No, no. All right, the next item up is item E.
Yeah, we still have to do 6, 7, 8.
That's correct. All right. HARB 2016-07.
I move that we approve the certificate of appropriate for HARB 21606.
Second.
Any Commissioner comment? Public comment? All right. It's moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Great. Passes 6 to 0. Next is HARB 2016-07.
I move the approval of HARB 201607.
Second.
Okay. Commissioner comment? Public comment? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes 6 to 0. And HARB 201608.
I move the approval of HARB 201608.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any Commissioner comment? Public comment? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you very much. That considers Consent Agenda number D. So now we're on Consent Agenda E, which is to authorize John Rice to attend the zoning hearing board meeting and oppose the following. Appeal number 2968. The applicant Villanova University property located at 800 East Lancaster Avenue and zoned PI seeks a variance from Section 280-68.1D3G of the zoning code regarding dark sky full cutoff requirements. I'll entertain a motion to enter that.
Hasn't this been withdrawn? Or no?
No.
No? Okay.
Is there a motion to approve this?
A motion to authorize it?
Authorize it.
So moved.
Okay, second? I'll second it. Very good. So now we have it. Is there any Commissioner comment on it?
Yeah, I'd like to know why. I mean, and I'd also like to know, why is it that, you know, I find about, out about this over the weekend? Like, to me, this isn't, if this is important, you know, we should discuss it in executive session. We should, I don't know why, you know, why are we, why do we, why do we not have the information to make a decision on this, you know, except, you know, what's provided in the packet? This is a policy consideration that in my, in my opinion, if it's a legal matter, we should have discussed it in executive session. That's what we've done in the past when we've made decisions to take an issue to the zoning hearing board. So I just need to hear the facts.
I think it's on the agenda because the board, the zoning hearing board is meeting in the next week or two. So if the board wanted to take a position to oppose or not oppose what's being requested, which is a variance to, there's a provision in the CICD ordinance which requires a full cutoff light. Villanova's here, I guess they want to address what they intend to do, but they're looking for a variance from that. And I think this is on the agenda because I believe Kevin probably recommended that this be addressed by the board, whether you want to take a position or not.
Well, I did a lot of the research on this and suggested that Kevin, three years ago, two years ago, and my reading indicates there's no such thing as 100%. And I don't even think that was the intent of the law. It's like a BMP, if you will. You know, if you have a little bit of dust in the air, you're not 100% anymore. So, and I also travel to locations that have observatories and have these rules in place, and they are not 100%. They're above 99, but they're not 100.
Above 99, I'd say is substantially equivalent to 100% and complies with the requirement.
Any other Commissioner comment on this? Public comment?
Well, I'd like to know what this is all about. But we have an ordinance that requires cutoff, and the university said it cannot comply or will not comply, and so it now has to go to the zoning hearing board. I'd like to know what the issues are.
They're here.
I mean, somebody here has to have put it on the agenda. So somebody who thinks it's a good idea, tell us why it's a good idea. Otherwise, why isn't this just like every other applicant who has an issue, they go to the zoning hearing board? So part, part of my frustration is whoever thinks this is a good idea, call me up on the phone and tell me it's a good idea, and maybe I'll agree with you. But I don't like the fact that I have, that the weekend before, there's a policy issue, and I don't know why it's even on the agenda. So I don't know whose idea it was, but I'm open-minded. If it's a good idea, tell me, and I'll support it.
I mean, that's, that's, that's a good question. Why is this on here?
Well, that's fine. Does anybody want to say who put it on?
Yeah, well, the staff wanted it on, and so I agreed to let it on.
And, and I have no objection to it.
It doesn't make policy decisions, though. We don't.
No, that's correct.
So.
It shouldn't have been on consent.
Yeah, so if something's on the consent agenda, that indicates that we all came to the consensus that we should take this position. And I had never heard of the position, and apparently we had taken, we were under, there was a consensus that we should take it. So I'm frustrated by the, that procedural irregularity. On the substance of it, I'll be open, but my inclination is this is no different than any other zoning hearing board issue, that they have a technical case to make to the zoning hearing board and that we let them make the zoning hearing board. Now, if we want to entertain, you know, the technical merit of it, I'll be, I'll be open to that.
Okay, then that's, that's what we're here to discuss, discuss tonight. And I think it is appropriate that it's taken off the consent agenda so that we can have a full airing of it, for us, right now. Correct.
And, and which it was. So, you know, it was taken off the consent agenda to have a discussion, and so I guess it wasn't the staff who put it on, it was Phil R. who put it on.
Well, it shouldn't, so Phil, respectfully, I don't believe that things that, only things for which there is a consensus should be on the consent agenda, in my opinion.
Don, your opinion is noted, and I'll take reference. Thank you.
All right, so we have the answer out there?
Yep. Correct.
So substantively, though, the issue is, as I understand it, that we want, the requirement is to make sure that it goes dark at a certain hour, and that that was part of the requirements. So what, what would be wrong with fulfilling the requirements that were originally specified?
Rich, well, let's, let's, let's hear from Villanova.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, since we're looking for someone to point the finger at, I'll take responsibility of that for the staff.
We're not, we pointed it at Phil.
But no, don't point the finger at him. I'll take responsibility for that, to put that on, since we're looking for that. But the issue is, is we have brought this before to the Board of Commissioners in a public meeting, when we've asked the board to do this. Since when we have direction from the board to be able to, when you have a CICD issue here, which, again, I'll give my opinion, that the township had an agreement with Villanova, and I understand the issue with zoning and that this is now the property right, property owner's rights to be able to do this. The issue is we bring it before the board for you to discuss this and have direction of whether or not this should be done, whether it was under the consent agenda or not. You can decide that, of how that is. You know, we will make sure that that does not fall under this, but we have brought this in the past before the board, when we have sent John Rice to the zoning hearing board. So that's why it appears on your agenda for this.
Thank you, Bob.
Most recently, I remember we did this, I, we did this for St. Martin's Church. We, we sent a recommendation to zoning hearing to allow a continuance of the non-conforming use despite a change in less C. So I, I think this is something that we do with some regularity.
I had a sense that it was, but I respect what Don says, and I also knew full well that we would take this off if that was what people wanted to do. So, and that is what we have done. So, well, then I'll take that under advisement. How's that?
But he has no, he has no way of knowing ahead of time.
But I will make, I will make sure that we do not, to address the concern, does not fall under this, under the consent agenda, that it appears on the regular agenda for that, as well.
So, this isn't a little thing. I'm sorry that, I don't want to make more of it than, so it might appear like it's little, but I also object to the answer being embedded in the agenda item. This is a policy decision for us. And, and when it's in the, when it's consent, when it's in the consent agenda, and it's a motion to, 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 for John Rice to appear, it is, it is as if we've already decided. And our job is to decide. So, so part of my objection is, I'm one of the seven decision-makers. Come to me, and maybe it's a great idea, but, but I object to others making the decision for me, and then I have to reach in and undo the process to go back to getting the information I need to make a decision. So I'll stop at this point and listen to what all the different parties have to say.
All right. My suggestion to this too, though, is I know Villanova's going to make a presentation now. I don't think it's appropriate for them to make a presentation, since they'll be making an argument in front of the zoning hearing board. I don't think it's appropriate to be made in front of this board. Thanks.
Well, they do have the right to make public comment about the idea, the motion that's heard for us. And so to that end, if, if we have no more Commissioner comment, then I'll invite public to come on up and make a presentation, or make their comments.
Hi, good evening. Chris Kowalski from Villanova. Mary Lou Smith is here as well. I'm not here to make a presentation. I do have some, some stuff to show you to provide some context for the nature of our request to the zoning hearing board. We're here, we want to go to the zoning hearing board to discuss the, the lighting in the The, the CICD ordinance was written to include a provision that all fixtures must be 100% dark sky compliant. We went back and forth on that CICD ordinance for just about four years, and a lot was in and out. We agreed to that provision because we thought we could meet that threshold. However, as we move forward, we realized, and some folks here have realized, that 100% dark sky compliance in a fixture that is aesthetically pleasing are two opposed nuances. So what we brought up to the CARES committee is what we would like to do, and what we have in mind to comply with the ordinance. And we propose to bring forth to the zoning hearing board options that are above 99% compliant. They don't meet 100% compliant, compliance, but there's really no fixture out there that we've seen that is, has any sort of aesthetic appeal, both for the university and the adjacent neighbors, to meet even close to that threshold. The 99, the above 99% compliant fixture does more closely match what is currently on campus and what is being installed right now in the surface parking lot, which is almost complete, which falls out of the CICD. So again, this is what we're hoping to go to the zoning hearing board to convey. This is something that, that we would like to do. We believe it has merit for both the institution and the neighbors. There's been some discussion about that at our Communication and Review Committee. But if the board feels it necessary to send John Rice, we're here to tell you that we would withdraw our petition, because it's not, it's certainly necessary to devote those kinds of resources on, on both ends to tackle something that is significant in the minds of some and insignificant in the minds of others. So that, that's all we're here to talk about. I, I have stuff to show you if you're interested, but again, I know that that's what we would show to the zoning hearing board.
Chris, did I hear you say that if, if we sent John Rice, you would withdraw the application of the zoning hearing board?
Yeah, we just.
And what would you do with the lights? What would you install?
We would, we would go with a compliant light that we think is uglier. There is a provision, and, you know, when we brought it up to the Communication Review Committee, it was agreed that it was not as, as aesthetically pleasing. Having that fixture does comply with 100% dark sky compliance, but what it doesn't allow us to do, we've talked a lot about light spillage, and there's not a lot out of these fixtures, but the 100% dark sky compliant fixture does not allow for any shielding. So when we're talking about impact on neighbors from glare to the side, we wouldn't be able to do that on the 100% fixture. So yes, if, if you decide to move forward with John Rice, that is, and I say that without prejudice, it's just not, it's not worth elevating to that, as much as we enjoy John's company.
Question for Steve. Steve, the, the difference between 99% and 100%, is that discernible to the eye?
We actually discussed this at the CARE meeting. And I'm not speaking for Villanova. I, I think their light was 99.4% compliant or 99.5% compliant. So that was just a very small amount that reflected upward in some fashion, somewhat like, similar to what Commissioner Nagel said. So I mean, this, this falls under the zoning ordinance, but looking at the graph that was supplied by Villanova, it seemed very minimal. And then there was a, I don't know if you have any of this stuff, Mr. Kowalski.
I do, but I'm.
But there was also a chart that, you know, kind of showed that it, I think it's a very, very, very minimal, the minimus change. I don't know if it's discernible at .5%.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I think also too, at the CARE meeting, we also talked about because of those lights and because of the graphs that were shown, there's an opportunity to add shields to the lights too, which would have actually been beneficial too, which was one of the items we brought up for consideration, which I think would have even had a bigger impact into the surrounding neighborhood. So I think there's a willingness to actually look at that and consider that. So I think that there was an opportunity here to make a bigger impact into the particular area as well.
And which, which lights are you referring to that had the shield?
The ones that bordered the property. Those were ones that we had some discussion at that meeting.
Just to be very clear, the fixtures that are in the parking, the surface parking area right now are the fixtures that are 99, and they're .2%, 99.5%, and 99.8% in the dark sky compliance area. And there's three different ones, because when you're doing photometrics, you're using different, different optics. So you're getting different levels of light. And so you don't just order one fixture, you order a multiple different fixtures that fit in your parking lot, because some that are just overhanging roadway only have one direction of light. So again, they're less than .1% different from 100% dark sky. With these fixtures, there is shielding capability that you can do fairly inexpensively for the glare. the glare. And the other thing about this dark sky compliance that we didn't know at the time when we were doing the CICD ordinance, and I don't know necessarily if when it was written, that other people knew as well, it can come down to the paint that's used on your pole for whether or not there's an uplight component to that. So it's very, it's very difficult to find 100% dark sky decorative fixtures, because they go up straight like this instead of hanging out like that.
Do you have pictures with you?
I do.
Can I see those?
Sure.
I'm having trouble understanding how you can be 99.2% compliant, or 5%, or 95.5, or .7, and still have glare. It just seems contradictory.
Jim, dark sky only refers to up.
Yeah.
So if you have a light that's properly designed, it doesn't shine up, but it still shines out.
Yeah.
Is that what the glare is? It's horizontal?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Jim, can you zoom in as much as you can on the middle of that?
So, this is your spread in light. 100% dark sky is anything above the 90 degree.
Did you speak in the microphone?
I'm sorry. I was looking at Commissioner Higgins. So the spread that you see below the 90-degree line is, is your glare, is your light output. And this 100% dark sky is anything that shoots up from the top of the light fixture into the sky. So there are some fixtures that are open so that they get light up into the sky. There are also some that, that they reflect onto their poles, so there's bounce back that goes up into the sky. You're still going to have, there's a rating, as Phil learned about, it's called the bug rating, and that is for, for the behind light, it's for the uplight, and it is for glare. And so the fixtures that we are proposing, both, one, the one that was accepted and the one that we're proposing have the exact same backlight and glare rating. So the only difference is the uplight, and what we're saying is it's .1, you know, it's minimal, but it's a much more attractive fixture.
So it's even tough to see on these. So these, this is, this side is the approved fixture that's 100% dark?
But also remember that the reason this was included there, it was an opportunity to introduce this concept to our ordinances, and right next to a dark sky light within 20 feet, 50 feet, we can have a standard light. So you're not going to have dark sky over Radnor Township. And you remember, years ago, we had that issue over at Eastern where the professor of astronomy, when they did their parking lots, was just furious about this. Jim, you might have been on the board one before when that was going on.
Here's just the illustration, and it's poor to see in this format, but right here above the tip, there's a little bit of red that points upward in the middle, and there's none on this one. That's the difference.
Okay. Well, if we can get to the discussion then of whether we should have the solicitor attend the zoning hearing board meeting, I think that's-
I think we let the zoning hearing board do their job.
Yeah, as Don says, it's a policy decision. I don't like the idea of us getting involved in it. When we did the Wayne, I don't think we're picking on you, but we have so much offending light in our township. If you're 90.2, or 90.5, 90.7, that's great. That's for the zoning hearing board to decide. But when we did the Wayne train station, we restored that. We were all, finished our work, and then SEPTA came in and put these horrible lights in there, and they're still there today. Too much glare, too much, too many lumens, too many candle, too much candle power. So I don't, I don't think we should have the solicitor do this.
Well, the issue for me is, not the CICD, I didn't vote for the CICD. I was against the CICD. I thought it was inappropriate. The CICD says what it says. You all voted for it. We ought to have Villanova comply with it. Simple as that.
All right, and I'm going to piggyback on that. Villanova is going to comply with it, meaning that, stop, stop, I listened, my turn.
No, no, they're not going, they're saying they're not going to comply with it.
Yes, no, because zoning hearing board is how they're going to comply, and if the zoning hearing board says, no, you can't have it, for, you're off by one one-millionth of a percent, you can't have it, then they can't have it. So they're not asking us to give it to them. All they're doing is they're asking to go to have their day in court over four one-hundredths of a percent of a threshold that is, as Jim said, very, very forward-thinking. And so to me, it is not appropriate for us to send John to, we haven't even, we'd have to have a reason.
The reason is to have it, compliance with our ordinance that you all pass.
That's not a reason.
That is a reason.
No, no, no. We'd have to, we'd have to, they're going to, they're going to have to go to the zoning hearing board, and they're going to have to either rely on, on the reasons why people get relief at zoning hearing boards. One is hardship, two is de minimis. And if we believe that it's not de minimis, then we can oppose it for that reason, and if we believe it's not a hardship, then we can oppose it for that reason. So, but it's not our place to, as I see it here, it's not our, we don't have a reason to take a position. As I see it, let them go, let them make the case. If the zoning hearing board thinks that there's no hardship, the zoning hearing board will kick it away, and then they'll have to get that, find that additional four tenths of a percent.
I see it as we do have a reason, the sanctity and the cohesiveness and the, and the compliance with our ordinance, and that we should send John.
So I think we have the motion out there, right?
Do you have any other commissioner comment? Because I'd like to make a comment, because this is in my ward, and this is part of the things that we have discussed in our CARE groups, and I think it's important to have this discussion. What, on the one hand, we have what we might call the sanctity of our rules and our codes, which is what Rich is referring to. If we're going to write the rules, and I didn't vote for it either, by the way, okay? But, but anyway, if we're going to write the rules, that people need to have a reasonable expectation that these are the rules we're going to have. And that is very important to have, which means that if you're not going to have, if you're going to get relief from the rules, you need to have a reason for that. It's not something that's granted easily, and it's probably not something that's granted, you know, just quickly for no good reason. On the other hand, we have to say, what is in the best, what is in the interests of the township and the residents? The reason that like, that standard got put in was to protect the residents who were going to be behind that, that area, in terms of the light that they would experience when those lights are on all night long, because they would have to be because of the safety issues for a parking lot and for the dorms that are there. And that's an important reason to have those lights on. So how do we protect them? Now, one of them had to do with using a dark sky initiative, a dark sky measurement standard. And as we're seeing, the differential between the two is very, very small. Part of what I'm considering too, as part of this discussion, is what happens to the folks on the other side of the Route 100 line, which is, which this borders. And I think it's very much in their interest to be able to have glare protection, so that the light does not spill past them. They don't even see that, because that's very close to their properties. And I think that's an important reason to have this discussion and to let the folks, put on a full-throat case on which way you need to do it. And I think we need to have that discussion and have the zoning hearing board hear that. Because I don't think, I don't, I don't believe that there is a matter of huge relief needed. On the other hand, I can't say that this isn't de minimis. That's what you have a board to decide. Is it de minimis? And I think that they can do that. They know our laws, they know our codes. They don't need John Rice to go ahead and tell us that, but rather go ahead and freely give that information and let them make the decision. They'll have folks coming from the residents, they'll have anybody who wants to be there as part of that give testimony, and I think this is an important dialogue that needs to happen to make sure that we get the best outcome, and that's where I'm coming from.
I really have no opinion about this, Leslie Morgan, 12 Farm, but I will say, since I've been coming to meetings, absolutely, the Board has directed Lawyer Rice to attend meetings at the zoning hearing board, and I think even Delaware County, on behalf of issues, because I don't think any of us can say it's de minimis. We don't know the grading and the, I mean, maybe it's, it only goes to 90%, and this is a big jump. I don't know. I know nothing about the lights and the lumens, but I think it would be in the residents' best interest to have Lawyer Rice there, protecting the CIDC, which was enacted such a short time ago, and, you know, for Villanova specifically, and cost a lot of money. So I think that, gosh, we should have the CIDC, the one and only project under it, comply with it. Thank you.
Okay, let's call the vote. All those in favor of authorizing John Rice to attend the zoning hearing board meeting and oppose the following, the Appeal number 2968, for Villanova University and the CICD on the issue of dark sky, full cutoff requirements, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
It passes 4 to 2. Or no, it fails 4 to 2.
Fails 4 to 2.
Very good. Okay?
Passes 4 to 2.
No, no, it fails 4 to 2. All right, thank you. Point of public participation? And before we start, I just want to make a slight comment, a correction of something I said last week, or last meeting. The last meeting went to introducing public participation. At this point of the meeting, I had said that it was for people who could not stay for the entire meeting. It was for people who were unable to make the end of the meeting to make any of their comments. And that was challenged, and someone had pointed out that that was not the reason for it, at least that was their understanding. So I went back and had the research pulled to find out, what was the genesis of this portion of public comment? And this is what I found, these are the minutes of the meeting of September 27, 2010, and John Nagel was president. And here is the items about public participation. It says, President Nagel announced that they are trying a new process so that residents don't have to wait long periods of time to bring their issues to the Board. Please make your comments brief. I've checked with John, this is the essence of his comments at that time, so I will correct myself and say that it is not necessarily, and specifically for people who cannot make it to the meeting. Anyone is free to make a public comment at this point in time, and, but we do ask that you make the meeting, the comments brief, so that we can continue with the business of the meeting. So at this point, with that correction fully stated, I'll ask if anyone has any public comment.
Sarah Pilling, 29 Garrett Avenue, homeowner now for 34 years in Radnor Township. I wanted to announce that the next meeting of the, whatever you want to call it, visioning for an alternate use of the Willows mansion, is Wednesday, May the 18th, at 7:00 in the evening, in this room. And thank you to the commissioners for relieving us of having to pay for the room or the taping of it. So it will be visible by, whatever you call it, by the video, so you don't have to come, but we really encourage people to come. There are two projects in addition to the nursery school that seems to be gathering some steam, sort of like a snowball rolling down a hill, getting a little bigger all the time. And I believe there, what, the research that those two groups have done will be presented, plus it'll be for anybody else who has an idea, wants to intend, wants to find out what's going on. So that's next Wednesday, the 18th of May, at 7:00 in this room. I also don't know whether I reported to you that I met with what's called a classical architect, is a person who studies old houses, not colonial, but classic, and we went through the mansion together. There is nothing left of Charles Barton Keen's design in that house, and the front facade and the back facade have been very much changed. It was to remove the two gazebo's that were at the rear of the house, that were, the entrance to them was tucked back under the facade of the second floor, they were removed. The dining, so the dining room was enlarged, and what was called the billiard room was enlarged. And then we discovered that walls were moved inside, and the proportions of the room as they were designed has been irreparably changed. So there's no way to read, to restore it to its historicity of the way it was built in 1910. On the other hand, the classical architect really doesn't like old houses being torn down. He said it was in terrible shape, but he's philosophically opposed because there are too many old houses being torn down, and unfortunately McMansions built in its place. I don't know whether he hates McMansions more than he hates old houses coming down, but he did do analysis. Luke asked me if he would write a letter. I wrote him a letter and said, will you write a letter? And he said, of course, so now it's time for me to become a nag. But anyhow, please consider coming next Wednesday, the 18th of May, and learning more about what the residents have dreamed up, that might be another use or another formation of the house, whatever the change would be, to keep it a public space. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Leslie Morgan, 12 Farm Road. This has been something I've followed for a long time, and I absolutely am still supportive of a private-public partnership if it would benefit the residents of Radnor with very little-cost investment. But then I opened, I guess it was Philly.com this past weekend, and I hope you all read that wonderful article, that the Haas estate, the Haas family, amazing family, amazing estate, and amazing for Radnor, and especially aligned with what we're talking about now, because it must have been God's hand, I think, reaching down, because I know Elaine, you would love a place where, like 20 years ago, the Willows, they did have nice weddings there, but now that space is outdated. Well, the Haas mansion, they gave enough money in their endowment to operate the mansion, and you'll be able to rent it for public events, maybe 60-year-old retirement parties, 21-year-old birthday parties, weddings, and things like that. And guess where it's located, which is the best thing for smart government? It is the next parcel to Radnor Township. So we don't have any cost, Radnor Township, but it is basically centered where all our residents will be able to take advantage of it. And if you've never seen it, it is absolutely glorious. And I think that they will have much more money than we as a township government could ever, or would be responsible to have. And our residents will be able to enjoy exactly what you wanted, and much better than what we could have done. So I am, I am very positive towards Sarah's idea on maybe doing something that is very unique with the Hilltop, because nobody's used the Hilltop there because the house is sat, the Willows, vacant for five, six years. And so I don't think that a renter is going to let us really use it, as we know, and I've asked you to create your own business plan to tell the residents how much use we would really get out of it from a lease or a private-public partnership. But now we have this God's hand reaching down, and we're going to have our own mansion contiguous to our citizens that can rent it, but no financial responsibility. So I think we should all say a nice little prayer tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you for that. So we have the public comment.
Phil, do you mind if I ask a quick question to John Rice? John, advice to us for attending that meeting on the 18th? Four of us attended the first meeting. It was not a public meeting, believe me, there was no draft policy created, it was just information, but my concern is that as it's moving along, it's becoming like a public meeting. So advice to stay away from that, advice to go, advice to advertise it, and then we can all go and say whatever we want?
Well, that, how is the meeting being run? It's not being run by the Board members that are there, correct?
No, correct.
So it's not a, it's not a public meeting.
So we're free to speak there and no, no, no hold, we're able to go speak our mind, advocate a position?
You can't deliberate on any issues as a group, but you can certainly go there as individual commissioners and express your opinions.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, Don. Okay, with that, let's move on to our committee reports, and we have them for public safety.
All right, I would like to introduce ordinance number 261606, an ordinance amending the code, Chapter 270 Vehicles and Traffic, for time-limit parking for Glenbrook Avenue. And Superintendent Calorula, do you want to give us a brief explanation of what this is?
Well, I'll second that before we.
Yes, Commissioner, ordinance 2016-6, that's amending the two-hour parking from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. That's except Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays. a.m. to 6:00 p.m. That's except Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays on the south side of Glenbrook Avenue. Back in August 12th, 2013, we were doing our traffic codification. This item was overlooked. If you do need any additional information, I have Officer Mattis here, who was on that codification committee as well.
Just prepared to say it's administrative, Chief, in your opinion?
Yes, strictly administrative.
And, and you all talked to the neighbors over there, I believe, and the issues that they were having with it were squared away, or?
Yes, Commissioner. It was Mr. McGowan. I went there, down there and spoke to him about it.
Great. Is there any Commissioner comment beyond that? Any public comment? Then we'll call the, call the vote. All those in favor, ordinance number 2016-06, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So moved, seven to zero. And it is introduced. This was an introduction, so we'll see this again.
Next, I'd like to introduce, to move to introduce an ordinance amending Section 270-13 one-way streets, Section 270-16 stop intersections, and Section 270-28 parking prohibited on Meredith Avenue. And this is an ordinance that would have the effect of making Meredith Avenue one-way. Is there a second? Does somebody want to?
A second.
Can we have a little explanation about this one?
Yes, Commissioner. First of all, Meredith will become, as you stated, a one-way street traveling northwest from Conestoga Road to Echus Avenue. The removal of the stop sign on Meredith Avenue, traveling south at the intersection of Conestoga, and we will remove the parking prohibited at all times at the curve of Meredith Avenue, which is 70 feet north of Conestoga Road and around 93 feet north of Conestoga Road, covering an area of 23 feet, I believe. Yes.
Correct.
And this is in my words, so I'll make a comment on it, and that is, this is a problematic area where it's a curve, a very drastic, almost a 90-degree turn curve. It takes you from Meredith down to Conestoga Road. And the problem is, is that you have people coming up very quickly. It's a cut-through area. They come up very quickly on that, and they meet people coming on, coming in the other direction. So we have a lot of conflict, traffic conflict there. And the loser actually is the folks who are parked along that side, because somebody swerves to miss the car coming up. And one resident has been hit three or four times in recent times based on that. And they were the ones who brought up this issue at staff traffic. They've actually gone ahead and gotten two sets of petitions signed, because the first one was just straight one-way. But in doing so, we found out and uncovered the fact that folks on Echus Avenue, if you're familiar with the area, were going to be inconvenienced to a greater degree. So in order, the least amount of government to accomplish what we're going to do was to make it a partial one-way just from Conestoga Road to Echus. That allows us to be two ways and allow ingress and ingress from Echus Avenue in either, in either direction. So that was the least offensive and the least way, the way to do that. The other things that are consistent with that, which is the stop sign removal and the parking, are strictly there to make all, administrative things to make this all work. And that's a fair statement, isn't it? Great. So. Is there a drawing we can see?
No.
Think it would be good to, to diagram what you just said. It's kind of hard to follow with just your description. There's no, no drawing?
We, we don't have a drawing, but if you want at the next meeting, Ray, can I have Google Earth? Bring it up and show you exactly what we're talking about, if you need that. Fair enough. So that's, this is an introduction. We would see that again if we, if we move it past this point. All right? Yes. And so we'll call the motion to vote. Is there any public comment, by the way? Yes, please. Watch it. There you go.
As Resident Garrett Hill, could you just say this one more time? If you're going from Conestoga to Lowry's, can you take a right onto Meredith to get there, or is it one-way coming east? I don't understand what's two-way and what's one-way.
Sarah, it's from Conestoga Road, going, you make a right or left from Conestoga Road, one-way to Echus there.
Okay.
Okay. Then from Echus to Lowry's, it is two-way.
Oh, okay. And so where is the no parking? I'm thinking of...
On the curve, just up, just up from the seafood.
Well, is the seafood, are the seafood people still going to be able to park?
Yes, his truck?
His truck?
Yes.
Because that's one of the reasons when you take that right, that you get into trouble. And I'm not saying his truck is wrong, because he needs it
Correct.
to deliver his fish.
Correct.
But it's, it is very awkward.
Yeah. It's going to make it a lot easier to, to enter that way, making it one-way. And then the residents there are going to have some more parking.
All right. Where is the additional parking going to be?
That, that round around the curve there was no parking. We are now are going to allow parking on the curve, because it's going to be a one-way direction there.
Okay. Were the people on Good Shepherd advised about all of this?
Hmm, I don't, unless the Commissioner went around to there. I'm not sure.
Did you go talk to all the people on Good Shepherd?
I did not, but what we did do is that Officer Mattis has gone ahead and arranged to have a traffic count being made on Good Shepherd, so we have a baseline of where that is.
Because I think they're going to become the cut-thru.
They, they may be, but if it is, it's only in one direction.
But they have parking on both sides of the street on Good Shepherd.
Right.
Yes, a lot wider street.
I spoke to some people, and they knew nothing about this.
Okay.
I just said, "Have you been part of this conversation?" They said, "Well, what are you talking about?" So I think that was a mistake, not to bring the Good Shepherd people in, because those two roads, they both are cut-throughs from Lowry's to Conestoga, and they're adjacent roads. And the, the Good Shepherd people were never told about this.
Okay. We'll get the word to them then. Good idea.
I think they need to have, be part of this whole conversation before you make a decision.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right. With no other comment, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of introducing ordinance number 2016-07, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes seven to zero. Great. Good bless you.
Thank you.
Thank you. From there, we'll move on to another, Personnel Administration has no report. Good bless you. Community Development? Public Works and Engineering?
No report.
Finance and Audit? Parks and Recreation? No, Finance and Audit is me, so I have no report.
Parks and Recreation has a meeting this Thursday night, 6:30, upstairs.
Upstairs, second floor.
Yeah.
Very good. And Library?
No report.
Public Health?
The Board of Health meets next Monday, and they're going to have a presentation. Is Andy doing it, Bill? Chief? Is Andy making the presentation with the Board of Health?
I'm not sure, Commissioner. I'll have to check with him.
But it's a presentation talking about narcotics and heroin and what's going on with those kinds of things. So it'll be a nice educational. And then one of the members of the Board of Health will be co-presenting with our police force.
What?
Monday, 5:30 or five, yeah, something. Yeah.
This coming Monday. Great. Thank you, John. Is there any other old business?
Yeah, I have an item. So at the last meeting, we discussed a perspective change to the P L O, the property owner of the Planned Laboratory Office District. The property owner submitted a, an application to change the zoning. We all had, gave feedback to the application. So we identified things in it that we liked and things in it that we disliked about it. I listened to what everybody said. I developed some draft language that I believe would satisfy the concerns that I heard the commissioners state, and it would also satisfy the, the objective of the applicant that some of the commissioners, at least the majority of the commissioners, had previously indicated they support. So I'd like to know if the, if the board wants that draft to become the document that becomes the anchor that we send through the process to evaluate the change. I, I think it's the best version, meaning I think it's the one that listens to the concerns that you all expressed and still accomplishes the goal that you identified. And if that's the case, if you want that to be the anchor, then at the next meeting, we would put it on the agenda, and we would initiate the process of making that the, the document that we send through the process for consideration.
Don, I haven't had any chance to go through that and provide comments, and did not plan on raising this today. I didn't know that you were going to make this request, old business. I don't think it's on the agenda, is it? I, I would prefer just to leave it for right now, and if you want to put it on the agenda for the next time, you can certainly ask to have it on the agenda for next time, but I'd prefer that we not.
Yeah, I don't want to put it on the agenda until, there's no reason to put it on the agenda. The only reason to have it on the agenda is if we decide we want it on the agenda. So I'm not going to unilaterally take any action like that. So if, if it's premature, that's, that's the nature of this, to see if it's premature, then you, you don't want to initiate that process at the next meeting.
I, I feel it's premature at this point, from my perspective.
So I have to admit, I did not get a chance to look at it this weekend, so I can't, I have no substantive reaction to your edits. But I would suggest that when we discuss this next, whether it's at the next meeting or some future point, instead of sort of presenting what, the draft that you've come, that you incorporated your thoughts into as the next draft, you know, we should discuss your edits, and I think John Nagel had some edits that he put in, you know, use the original draft that was presented to us with the edits clearly marked and redlined that have been added, as opposed to presenting, you know, an already-edited draft as what we start from, so that it's clear to everybody, the public included, sort of where we started and who's making what changes.
That's what my document is. It's a redlined version of, it's a redlined version of our existing ordinance that shows the changes that I believe we need to make in order to accomplish the goal that the applicant and some of us have identified as worthy, and address the concerns that I heard the board say at the last meeting.
Right. And so John Nagel also had some red lines, or green lines, I think his were. And when I go through it, I'm sure I'll have my comments as well.
Okay.
So my point is, instead of taking one version, you know, I think we should all feel free to make our edits and then discuss it from there. And just, you know, whatever edits have a majority, those are the ones that will go in.
Something has to serve as the baseline, though.
What they presented.
Yeah, but the baseline, all of us reject.
We reject it. That's not, that's not a baseline.
So it does not make sense to start with a baseline that has seven people opposed to it.
Yeah, so.
So we need a new baseline. And...
Didn't the Planning Commission approve the P L O?
They did. They made the recommendations.
Forwarded to us.
Right. But seven of us at the last meeting, there was nobody at the last meeting that thought in that current form, it was the form that we should support.
We didn't discuss the one that's coming through Planning. This is the one that Steve Gabriel's been working on with Planning.
John, you're talking about R2.
Yeah.
The R2 ordinance.
Right. So we should get that and this, and do a little alignment.
Well, multiple choice is always good. I mean, I have to say that the, the version that I'm offering is a very distinct alternative to the, the version that Steve, or Steve Gabriel from R2 presented. So evaluating them side by side is fine with me. So I guess at a minimum, then, you know, you'll have to decide your schedule as to when you can be ready. But when we'd have that, then I would like my version evaluated side by side to the version that Steve Gabriel provides.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
I'd like to recommend to the board that Commissioner Curly's version and the R2 version be on the next meeting's agenda for discussion by the board and evaluation.
I, I recommend that we, we not have that. When's the next meeting?
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
May 23rd.
I, I, so my view would be, no, we're not ready for the R2 version whatsoever. We're focusing on Don's version, and I would like that to be at least four weeks before we review that. But I can't see that I'm going to be supportive of the R2 version at all. So my view is that we work with what Don drafted, we work from the, actually, what Don, what we should work from is the P L O and amendments to the P L O. And I think that Don's version is closest to that. So that's what I would like to do. But again, I still think it's premature and would not like to see this on the next, certainly would not like to see Steve Gabriel's version at the next meeting.
If, if the board so wishes, I'll let Steve Gabriel know that it won't be on, and if the board would like, Don's version will be on the agenda.
Well, my sense, Rich, just wait a month from now, we evaluate, we evaluate both versions, or?
Why wait?
Wait, because Rich is asking us. That's my, my reason now.
Yeah, why, why rush? What's the, there were significant, significant and multiple comments to what we were presented. So I think it's not very close to getting anything that's going to gain any consensus.
The reality is, we have three versions. We have the Steve Gabriel version, we have the Penn Medicine version, and we have my version. Steve Gabriel's version is 20-some pages. The Penn Medicine version is four or five pages, and my version is 10 lines. So we're going to have choices. We'll be able to see which one we think best achieves the objective. So the only issue is, when do we evaluate it, whether it's two weeks or a month? I have no issue with waiting a month if Rich feels, it's in Rich's ward. I have no issue deferring to Rich to wait a month.
I agree.
So that it'll, it'll go to the June, then, agenda?
That's, that would be my request.
Yeah, let's put it on the first meeting in June, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And that'll give us plenty of time to evaluate it. And will that give you time to make your comments to it?
Sure.
Great. Thanks.
I have another item. Are you finished with yours?
Do we need a motion to make that happen, or no? Okay, very good. Okay. So noted, then.
I have another item for old business. I just want to announce a meeting. The Ardrossen Trail Project that is being led by National Lands Trust is having the first public meeting to start to hammer out what the design might look like. And that is going to be on Tuesday, June 7th, at 7:00 p.m. in this room. It will be televised, and we invite anyone who's interested to come. We'll be starting from the draft that is posted on the website under, on the left-hand bar, under Ardrossen Project, so you can take a look at it before you come to the meeting. And we'll be discussing and taking input from the public on, on what's been presented so far and what changes people would like to see. It is the first of several meetings, but it will be an important one. So it's June 7th, 7:00 p.m., this room.
Elaine, is there any other old business? All right. Is there any new business?
Yeah, the first thing on here, I mentioned it last time, is the Carroll H. Axelrod Memorial Blood Drive. That is in this room tomorrow from 7:00 to 7:00. It is a blood drive. It's run by two of our neighbors on South Wayne Avenue, and it's, it's in memorial for someone who passed away. It was one of our neighbors, it was her mother. So if you can make it, please come by. I'll be here at 5:00, and if you can donate, that'd be great. Thank you.
The information about all that is on our website, is it not?
It is.
Great. Thank you. All right. Any other new business? I have some new business. Any others? No? Then, since we had a light meeting, I took this opportunity to put on new business, an update on the Villanova Care Group that has met several times. So I'll try to make a brief comment about it and, and update where we're at. So, so far, this group has been the, met for three months. We've had four meetings, because the first month, we started off with it two weeks apart to kind of give it a kickstart. The, for those who do not know, this group is, consists of seven members, two from Township, Bob Zankowski and Steve Nercini, and two from Villanova, Chris Skavovsky and Mary Lou Smith, who are both presenting tonight. Also, two residents who have been appointed by the, applied and appointed by the board, Rick Leonardi and Jane Gally. And the seventh member is myself, as I chair the meeting. So what we have is the, the top people for both the project, the township, and residential representation, kind of talk about the issues, to communicate and review where things have been on the C I C D construction project. Reason for this is because this is probably the largest construction project to this, to this date in Radnor Township, and affects a number of people on a very busy road, namely Lancaster Avenue, and we wanted to have that kind of communication and review process. The, it's also attended, it's a public meeting. We have it the first, generally the first Thursday of the month now, up on the second floor, where Parks and Recs always meets, too. And it's attended by a fair number of residents, varying numbers, but they are attended and they make comments during the course of our meetings. The initial issues that were addressed, that have been addressed so far, have to do first with the construction of the West Lancaster Lot. You all know that, where the three buildings were standing on the south side of Lancaster Avenue, and that has been turned into a surface lot. And it's not part of the C I C D per se, but it's part of the construction project, and so we get some communication and review about that. The concerns about that happened to be first about noise, because there was concern at the very beginning that some... the very beginning that some subcontractors were jumping the gun and starting before 7:00. So that was one of the first things that we addressed, the need to make sure that that did not happen, and the residents made that known, we made that known, and Steve Nercini, his inspectors, did a good job of, I think, of making that compliant. Second issue of them, that they were concerned about, was buffering, because, the importance of it is because that this borders on the Route 100 line, directly opposite folks on Albin Lane, on the north side of Albin Lane. And a lot of trees were taken down, basically almost, a substantial number, majority of those trees there, which afforded them a direct line to Lancaster Avenue, and also, then would also happen to have a lot of activity for parking, and the cars coming in and out, which they did not have prior. So the buffering was important to them, and we wanted to make sure that A, that there were the inspections of what was happening were happening, and then the, and there had been several inspections of what was planted, to make sure that they are there to the code that was done, and according to the plan, and that they are beginning to thrive. Now, last inspection was made on May 2nd last week, where it was gone ahead and plants that were not thriving were identified for replacement, and those that were having a little bit of trouble were also identified for actions, whether it be pruning or some other actions to help them survive the remainder of the spring. The idea is, is that they will also make another inspection in July, as an official basis, to see where things stand, so that if more replacements or remedial action need to be taken, that they'll be done at that time, too, or at least identified at that point. The, some other issues that would have been addressed is, the Albin Lane residents had some serious concerns about the buffering, which I just mentioned, because they back up against that property, but also their lane has a, has a long, has a history, and is becoming more so of a cut-through traffic, both in terms of volume and speed going through there, as people take a shortcut, trying to avoid maybe what might be traffic jams on Lancaster Avenue. So to remedy that, we've gone ahead and taken some steps to give them at least some temporary speed bumps to see how they were working out. There was a time where they did have speed bumps, and some of the residents had complained about the placement of them. We went back for a second placement, and this time, the residents were all in agreement of where they were placed, and so there were no objections, and they had signed a petition to allow for speed bumps. That will come before us at some point. The, and all the residents have, have signed that, or at least the required number of residents, so that part is good. Other concerns have to do with inspections and what is happening with that. The inspectors is on site, and also, 24, or every day, seven days, or six days when they have the construction. Steve, thank you Steve for nodding on that. The, Steve Nercini himself also inspects that, that area several times during a week, as he goes past to the township, and also makes specific trips there, so that they're heavily inspected to make sure that they're complying with the construction plans as done, and as we approved here, and the township has approved. The, some of the things that they wanted to make sure of, was not only that the site was being done as planned, but also that mud, dirt was not traveling onto the streets. I know they also have plans over in the Pike Lot, where they're doing some work now in South Isan, that they actually have a street cleaner on standby, if one of the trucks come out with dirt, that guy's right out behind them to clean that up, so that it does not travel all the way down Lancaster Avenue to our township. And they're also making sure that they're keeping to the plan. So we hear reports about that, some of the reports, the daily reports are actually up on the website, if people cared to read them. So it's heavily inspected. The other thing that was of concern was ideas of safety. At one point, Church Walk, where the students were crossing the bridge and getting over to the, to the north side of the campus for classes, there was a closing off of, caging off of an area, so that they did not mix with the trucks that were bringing in the dirt and the, and the, and the rocks for the, for the pavement. On South Isan Avenue, they actually, when they started doing the work on the Pike Structural Garage, they closed off the sidewalk to the east, and in doing so, they had to make special arrangements for handling those students who were traveling north to get to the campus. What they did was, they enlarged the sidewalk and created a sidewalk on the west side, I think it's at least four feet, if maybe more, like five feet wide, so that students can pass by there. They also created a special crossing zone right there, just north of the bridge, so that, which is actually fairly close to where a permanent crossing walk will be done, according to the original plans. That is marked by signs on both sides, I believe, and also one of those signs that's actually in the middle of the street, so that we have, cars that are coming down there are cautious and watching out for the students. I know there's been some problems in the beginning when they started to do that. I have heard of less problems, the police, Radnor Police Department was out there to inspect the area and monitor how the safety was happening with the students crossing, and the cars going down there, and they said that it was going up fairly well. I know I've traveled there many times to see what's happening, and find the students are waiting at a crosswalk, because they have the right of way, and cars are stopping for them as they go ahead. And they're also, what I'm finding, are paying attention. I'm not seeing students there watching their iPods, or their iPhones as they cross, so they are, they do seem to pay attention there. The, as I mentioned, the Radnor Police Department also monitors the site from side to side. The fourth thing that happened as part of this meeting here, as part of the group being able to meet, is that residents had asked for, and you've heard this last meeting or so, they've asked for a enlargement of the sidewalk on the south side. Now, part of the genesis of that is that as part of the CICD plan, they are making a very wide promenade-type sidewalk in front of the dorms, and that's the part just exactly west of Isan Avenue. And of course, from there, they would go in front of the parking lot that's being done now in the West Lancaster Lot, and then all the way down to 320. And that, that line is just the township code of four feet. So now we go from a very wide promenade to a very narrow one there. So they raised the question, could this be done, that they could widen that sidewalk? That was not part of the original plan. Originally, I remember at the meeting, Villanova said, no, that was not part of the plan, they could not speak for that. And they surprised us at the second meeting they had right after that, where they said that they had gone back, discussed it with their folks, and even though this, they had price-tagged it at somewhere north of a quarter million dollars, that they found it would be beneficial for them to do that, and they go ahead and made the plans to do that. And so they were for us, I think, at the last meeting, in order to make that happen. So that was kind of a positive outcome that came out of that, out of people discussing it, the residents, and that kind of a, kind of a nice little pilot group to talk about these kinds of things, and have some fun things happening. Now, as far as the timetable is concerned, for those who are interested, you can always visit the township website to find a graphic and a PowerPoint demonstration of what the timeline of items are, but I'll briefly summarize them for you right now. This is part of the communication portion that we have during the meetings. And the first part is that the West Lancaster Lot, which is those three houses on the west side of Lancaster Avenue, they will be open for graduation, which is next weekend, May 13th and 14th, just to handle overflow parking related to the graduation, which is good. As they're ready to resurface, most of it is in strip. Then they will close it immediately to go ahead and finish the things that they need to do. For example, complete the islands, put in the lighting, and everything else that's done. So that will be closed until that part is finished. They're looking somewheres around June for that to be done. So that's step one. Let me, the next item that they're working on right now is the Pike Parking Structure, which is the four-story structure. Right now, they've developed the site, they've, they've scraped it, and also dug deep to make the underground, the first layer of underground parking, and they're going ahead and pouring in the concrete for the caissons that would support the structure. The, I should mention now, as part of this, that June 13th, or somewheres around there, mainly, middle of June, is when they expect the first volley of precast deliveries, and that, these are the trucks that are bringing in these large beams of concrete for the precast, that's going to be used for the floors and the ceilings and the sides of the, of the parking structure. Now, we've seen this happen before, when they were doing the second, the two extra floors on top of the St. Augustine Center, and they had a very efficient, and it turned out to be a very effective way to handle this. So I'll mention it now, they're going to do the same process. They've worked it out with the Radnor Police Department. So that trucks that are coming in, they're very long trucks, because these are very long pieces of precast, are being staged in portions of the Blue Root, waiting to come in for the exit for Radnor. At that point, then, they come into Radnor, and there's one or two spots that they're holding just on the other side of the Blue Root, I believe that's what's happening. When it's, when they're ready for that truck to make its delivery, it is being escorted by Radnor Police. It comes down to the lights, there's two lights they have to go, Villanova Center, also at 320, and then also the one at South Isan Avenue. And they escort them and time the lights so these trucks can come through efficiently. At that point, then, once they pass Isan Avenue, then they're going to go into another street that comes down in behind the parking structure between that and Pike Field. All right? So this way, they'll have literally hundreds of trucks coming in doing this over the course of the next month or two, once they get started. And, but they have an idea of how to do this. I remember when I went looking for it, I had a tough time finding them doing this, they had done it so effectively. So you really have to watch what's happening. But if you are part of that, on that street, that's what's happening, and they do have an efficient way of getting them through, and once they make the delivery, they come out, and they only bring one in at a time, so that they're, otherwise, they're being staged and escorted. The, the third thing that's going to happen is going to be some roadway improvements on Lancaster Avenue, sometime in June, to be determined. And PennDOT is really the one that controls this, because they are the ones that, they have not given final approval, which they will do, but they cannot move until they get final approval from PennDOT. And that's going to affect the Lancaster Avenue, the south side of Lancaster Avenue, on the east end of Isan Avenue. That means it's right in front of, opposite Jake Nevin Fieldhouse. And that part is being widened to make for a right-turn-in lane as part of the CICD process, so that these trucks can come in from the backside of Pike Field, or behind, between Pike Field and the structure. It will be there permanently, because that will be a right-in, right-out way for folks to come and approach the parking structure, especially during special events, that the police would monitor that. So they're actually adding another lane off of that spot on the south side of Lancaster Avenue. When they do that, they need to, they need to close off the south side of Lancaster Avenue's sidewalk, basically from the edge of Pike Field, or all the way down to Isan Avenue. They, they will advise folks on how to make the crossing, if they're walking in that direction. They've also agreed to make special arrangements for some folks who are handicapped, who would otherwise walk down there, or take a wheelchair or whatnot to be down there, and they will make special arrangements for them to, to come to campus when they need to.
Who will, who will do that?
Villanova will do that.
No, I mean, the new Villanova Police or Security?
Villanova University will send a van, or whatever they need to do to make that happen, because they're aware of that, and they want to make sure that's happening. Also, in terms of road improvement, North Isan Avenue, there'll be some activity there, because right in front of Jake Nevin Hall, this will not be a widening of the street, but they have to do some digging there to add some infrastructure. Basically, they're moving their cables for electricity and internet and all those kinds of things over to that side of the road, so they'll be digging on their property, it will not affect Isan Avenue directly, but they'll be on their side, doing some activity there for construction, for their infrastructure improvements. Now, during this, we can certainly say there's going to be lots of activity, but there will be no road closures, at least, you know, if there was, it's only temporary while perhaps a truck comes through. So there's no planned road closures. Please be careful, and all this is being coordinated with the Radnor Police Department. And they've done a very good job so far of planning what's happened so far, and they have a great plan coming forward to this, to minimize the effects of what's happening. The next item that they talked, that they've talked about happens to do with the pedestrian bridge, and that is, they gave us drawings at the last meeting in terms of what it was going to look like, in essence, and how the lighting was going to be handled. Essentially, the handle, the lighting inside the, the, the bridge itself is going to be recessed lighting at about chest-high, so there will not be lights coming down on it, it will be illuminated from the inside, along the walkways, about chest-high, with the idea that people can only see what's in front of them, but they'll also be able to see enough light of faces of people coming towards them. So that's a very high-important safety issue for them, they wanted to address it that way. The pictures of this, and some of the issues about the lighting and the drawings, are also going to be available on our website. I know they've, they've sent over, Villanova sent over to us yesterday, or today, for posting on there, so that will be posted on the website for those who wish to watch that. The, at this moment, the way the plan has, is that the entrance to the bridge will be not only at the SEPTA station, for those folks coming from the south campus, you go directly from the SEPTA station there, on the Route 100 line, straight across, they don't have to go up or down. And besides that, just a little bit south of Lancaster Avenue will be an entrance station to the bridge. They have two stairs, one facing north, one facing south, so either way, you can get onto it fairly easily. And at that same point, there'll be an elevator that will carry folks for handicaps on there, and that'll take them over to the other side of the road. The, so some of those drawings are on, will be on the website as well.
We'll have them up as soon as we can tomorrow, Commissioner.
Great, thanks. And where they, where they, where would they be, in the Villanova section?
That's correct. So there's a whole section in there of everything we've gotten from Villanova, there's all the inspection reports, all the various items, and that'll be one more that will be added.
So you'll add a section for it, saying these are these?
It'll be, yes, it'll have a subtitle.
Great, perfect, thank you Steve.
Also too, Mr. President, we can post all, we'll have all the minutes of the meetings, they're all posted on the website, so this way, everything will be posted.
Right. And all the meetings up to date, have agendas and the minutes?
Everything's up there, so...
Have been posted.
Everybody can get all the information that they'd like, all from up there.
Perfect. The, the next item here is that, our next meeting will be June, June, June 2nd, that's a Thursday, we meet upstairs. It starts at 6:30, and we go as long as we need to, but we've done a good job of kind of trimming down the amount of hours we need to spend on it. This may be a combination meeting, they have asked, they have, in the past, have had what they called neighbor meetings, where they've invited people to the campus, where they were showing them PowerPoint presentations of what's happening next, and there's been some discussion, and more to come on that, about whether they'll use that as their neighbor meeting, since, rather than have two meetings, just have that, and invite neighbors to come to the Township Building, instead of Villanova to hear more updates from them, in terms of the regular process of the progress of the, of the construction. Most of the other things that are happening in the summertime will be, there will be more work on Lancaster Avenue, on the west side toward, away from Isan Avenue. None of that will happen till after June, so we'll have more information, again, PennDOT will be forthcoming on when that's going to be allowed. And I guess the last point is just strictly that, as Steve mentioned, we'll have this new information up on the website, and, and at the Villanova section, that can be easily viewed at that point, too.
So just, just to let everybody know, the grading permit plans are on the website, inspection reports are on the website, pretty much most everything we have received, and then you'll have the items from the bridge that were shown at the care meeting the other night.
Wait, so can I clarify, did you see the final drawings for the bridge?
These were not, these were not architectural drawings?
No.
They have not yet?
Sketches.
Yes, bridge sketches. They have not been approved by PennDOT.
So in the sketch, is there a way for the north side of Villanova, I'm sorry, the north side of Route 30 sidewalk to go under the bridge? How does that look?
It goes under the bridge, it just continues. The bridge is over, over that sidewalk.
So the sidewalk, and is it, is it just a four-foot sidewalk, or?
Whatever, the sidewalk there will not be changed. So whatever exists now, that sidewalk will remain as part of those plans. And the bridge meets prior to the, I think it's the first set of stages, those, those trees that are there now, on the, on the chapel walk there, they will need to be removed as part of this plan, and others will be replanned, replaced, replanted, once all that, this work is done, but it leaves you off in front of the church there.
So, you know, as part of the TAP grant that we applied for, there's a connector between the trails that we would like to develop bike trails, some big, not just sidewalks, on the high school biomed area, and then also on the Isan area, and the connector is the north side.
Right.
So, you know, before the plans get finalized and engineered, it might be worth having the conversation of if they, they could leave a little more space in case, and when?
That's, that's a very good point, and we should, we should look into that, so let's, let's get that information out to them, and see where we stand.
Okay.
And certainly, I'll make it a topic on the June 2nd meeting, too, if not, we don't talk before about it.
Also, Phil, are, are the public and the care committee getting enough access to the, to the site to see everything that's going on, or is that, I've gotten some communications about that?
Well, Villanova has not allowed anyone other than construction folks onto their site. They've cited safety and insurance reasons for that, and risk management. So anybody can view much of the site from the perimeter, but that's, that's the nature of it, until they get their certificate of occupancy. They've also said, because there has been concern of seeing, the residents seeing where the buffering was, not just the Township arborist, and they have offered, when they do receive their certificate of occupancy, which they expect, Steve, you may opine on when that might be around, but they would, they would be glad to give the residents and anyone else a tour of all the buffering that's been done on that West Lancaster Lot, and show them what's been done. So, but until they get their certificate of occupancy, even I can't get on it. So nobody's, nobody's allowed, it's not into construction under it. Steve, do you know when that CO might be around?
So their, their grading permit completion should be around the end of May, beginning of June.
Okay.
They're very, they're very close now, and they're doing what they need to do to be able to park for graduation, but it should, you know, roughly a month.
Right.
So... So, are you talking about a certificate of occupancy, or a grading permit approval?
They don't really get an occupancy permit for... So, they were issued a grading permit for the parking lot, so as from the engineering standpoint, we will sign off on the fact that the work that was required in the grading permit is complete. They're very close to completion on the eastern portion right now. If you drive by, you can see that there is still veneer being put on the retaining wall.
So, yeah, great. I did speak with the Township arborist, and unofficially, he's given us an official report. Officially, he... I asked him what kind of shape in general the buffering was over the winter time. I don't... I'll put words in his mouth, this is third-party stuff, but just to give you a sense of it, because that's really what I wanted. He said that he would normally expect somewheres around 15% or so to be lost over the course of a winter time on new plantings, and he found far less than that to be problematic. So, in his mind, much of it had survived fairly well. He did have specific spots that... And plants that he tagged for replacement, although this would not be the moment that they wanted to be... They would be replaced, it would be better time to do that. So, they have a specific plan in mind on how to do any replacements and remediations, and they will continue to follow that up, especially up until July, when they do the second formal inspection on that. So, that part's there. In the meantime, between now and then, we will have a chance to go look at it as they go ahead and open up the lot to the public, and they'll give a tour of it, too. Great, good questions, any other questions on that? Good, thank you for your attendance on that. I'll beg your indulgence for one more item, and that is, I was asked by the folks at the Garrett Hill to mention the Second Annual Four Garrett Hill Golf Tournament. This is a fundraiser to help out either the July 4th Parade, or other items of worthiness in Garrett Hill, and it's going to be Monday, May 16th, which is next Monday, at Turtle Creek Golf Course. The start's at noon, and it includes lunch on the course, dinner at Flippin' Bailey's afterwards, and then awards and prizes. They... I'll give you the website, so you can get more information, they encourage you to come. You can make a donation to the event if you're not able to make it. If you're not a golfer, you can come and just have dinner and arrange for that, that's $25. And the website location is www.four, as a golf four, F-O-R-E, garretill.com. So, that's www.four, F-O-R-E, garretill, all one word, dot com. So, appreciate your support if you're able to come out, and look forward to seeing you then, and certainly benefits the parade and other worthwhile items in Garrett Hill, so appreciate your support. Thanks. Any other new business?
I moved to Jen.
Public participation. Any other public participation? Yeah, Rick.
Yep, Rick Leonardi, Albin Lane. As you just heard, the... There are new elevations, the pedestrian bridges are going to be available online, if they're not already. One particular feature has given rise to some strong reaction, both at the most recent care group meeting, and among some of the public, we've seen the pictures subsequently. As a member of the committee, I feel obliged, I've got to bring these reactions to the Board's attention. Atop the four-corner abutments of the bridge are depicted four metal crucifixes, each six feet tall, and standing more than 25 feet above the roadway. These crosses appear to stand just outside the public right of way, and they are oriented to face traffic on Route 30 each way. We've been told the pedestrian bridge is in whole or in part being paid for and built by the State of Pennsylvania, taxpayer money. There's an obvious question of the appropriateness of taxpayers funding the erection of a religious display, as well as the question of the public reaction, were these not crucifixes, but instead, say, crescent moons, or stars of David? Clearly, VU is a Catholic institution, it's not surprising that it intends to include its relevant iconography, but this is perhaps a little ostentatious, and a little confrontational even.